Are we ready for the table?
Yes.
All right, I'll call the meeting in order. Let's rise your pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Thank you all for being here. Lots of exciting things happening. First, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you. We have a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes, adopted 7-0-0. We come to the highlight of the evening.
I'm in my ninth year as a teacher at Heart Career Center.
Meet Amy Harris, a woman who is living in the future.
I teach all computer science classes. I teach programming 1 and 2, robotics 1 and 2, video game design 1 and 2, and explain computer science.
While the gadgets are entertaining, it is something else that has Harris's heart.
I definitely enjoy the students the most in teaching.
I think Ms. Harris's greatest strengths are her passion for her students and her willingness to go above and beyond for every single level of course that she teaches, whether it be esports, or programming, or computer game design. She genuinely has an unlimitless ability to help her students succeed in any of those things.
And Harris teaches some complex courses, but she is always teaching the student first.
My greatest personal accomplishment as a teacher is probably just getting kids that find out they're interested in computer science and they want to create a future from it, and they keep coming back to me to learn more, and then we went to college to study, uh, study it more in depth.
Teaching may be her number one focus, but Harris has also started one of the most popular programs on the MHS campus, esports.
It was literally my kids that drove me to start esports. They asked if they could, and I said yes, and we did, and it's just grown from there.
As esports continues to grow, so does Harris's influence on her coworkers. She and Hester Russell work closely together, and Russell says she is inspired by Harris's devotion.
Being able to work with Ms. Harris influences me in a positive way because she sets such a good example for, and she sets a, uh, a high bar for us to be, and so she inspires a lot of us, I think, to, to put ourselves to that level.
And Harris feels that she has found her life's work, a forever home, right here in her hometown of Mexico, Missouri.
I think I'll probably be teaching here for quite a few more years. I'm from Mexico, and so it makes sense for me to stay here.
All right, thank you, very good. And again, produced by the students, so congratulations to them, and thank you, Amy Harris, for what you've done. Uh, we also have a distinguished company this evening. We want to recognize the accomplishment of the boys' basketball team. They would like to come on in.
Players and coaches, we wanted to invite you to our April Board Meeting to recognize all of the work and dedication that you put into making your season tremendous. Um, it was very inspiring and exciting for our whole district and the community to watch you play um, and to see your talents on the court, and we wanted to congratulate you on a conference sectional and quarterfinal play in your season. Thank you.
Just, uh, thanks for all the support. You know, uh, these guys put in all the work. We just reap the benefits as coaches to be able to work with these guys and, uh, and all their talents on and off the court. You know, they put in a lot of work in the classroom as well, and we're very appreciative of them and appreciative of you guys and your support, um, throughout the season, and we're looking forward to next evening as well.
Great, thank you. In the President's comments, I would first like to note our April Employees of the Month, and congratulate and thank Jennifer Warbritton, who's a Spanish teacher at the high school and has been employed in the district for six years, and Holly Shudel, who's a bus driver in the Transportation Department, and has been employed in the district for 10 years. And so again, we thank them for their service, and we appreciate their efforts. We'll start over here, and work our way around.
Uh, congratulations to the Employees of the Month, and I love to see Amy on that staff highlight. I know she's taken that esports program where you are. That's always exciting when kids come up with a, a new idea. Bring it, and we can get an administrator to work with them and bring it to life. Um, and I know, I worked with Amy previously, and I know she's passionate about it. I know she loves, she loves working with the kids, so it's awesome to see her on the staff highlight. Um, congratulations to our student athletes. They had an excellent season on the court and in the classroom as well, which is always impressive. The, the, the building reports, as always with COVID, those are, those are always extra beneficial to us, so I appreciate the administrators giving those to us. Um, and then, and one thing that stood out to me was, um, the McMillan Early Learning Center was able to increase their, I think it was their kindergarten attendance by almost 30%, which is awesome, so good work. Dr. Billiken and your team on that. I know that's not an easy feat, but that's always good. We can get our littlest friends in there more. Um, and again, to, to our administrators, our staff, our teachers, thank you for everything you do for us. It does not go unnoticed. I know I say that almost at the end of every time I speak, but thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, congratulations, Employees of the Month, and Amy. But, um, on a basketball team, congrats to them. It's a lot tougher to be a parent than it is a player, so. I never realized it'd be that emotional, so. But, um, Rafe clearly got his talent from his mom, because I never played that family. But he also has some skills. Glad to see Noteworthy is having their dinner theater again. I was told by someone that there's no food, but it'll be a great performance. My oldest son was in Noteworthy, and what an outstanding thing it is. And rumor has that the first 100 people get a cookie from the Cookie Club, so I'm sure I'll be the 101st. Also, Sarah, props to her for wearing a vest like me. It's kind of like. Her being here tonight with CTA, let us know what the teachers think. We always need to hear that. I know we see a lot of people around town, but truly, we need to hear what you're all saying, too, so.
Um, this is kind of bittersweet, but, uh, I agree with what Lavo said. Um, every month, we highlight certain individuals or certain groups, but it's, it doesn't do the district justice. Um, we have very talented students, both academically and athletically. Um, so, great job to them. Thank you all for everything you do every day. Um, like it's been said, month after month, day after day, it does not go unnoticed. You all are what makes the district what it is, and this is a great district, so thank you for everything you do.
Um, I want to second some, some of what everybody else said. Um, congratulations to Amy. I went to school with Amy, and Amy does a great job. She's a great person. Um, also to Jennifer and Holly for the Employees of the Month. I second what Todd said. It's not easy being an athletic parent. It's getting a little nervous, nerve-wracking, but congratulations to the boys. As far as the, we, we can't forget how hard the, the students worked on their athle, or their academics as well. So congratulations to the fall sports athletes that got academic all-state. And I, forgive me if I didn't catch all, I know that the softball team got an academic all-state as a team. I don't know if anybody, other, any other groups did as a team, but that's pretty awesome to see the, the student athletes working hard in the classroom as well. Um, I messaged Deb a couple of times, but Nicole mentioned the, um, pre-k, or pre-k kindergarten being up on their attendance, middle school staying above 90%, which is awesome. That's the one I get every day, so that's the one I see. Um, so others might be doing a lot better, but I know, I know I told her when it got over 90%, I was like, that's really cool. So it looks like things are starting to get a little bit more back to normal. Um, and thanks to Scott and Nate for your, um, service on the court. It is very much appreciated.
Um, I, I want to start there. I want to thank Scott and Nate for everything they've done. It's, you know, especially this last year's been difficult with COVID, and, um, they both have so much to contribute and such positive things to add to the district, and, um, they're both going to be greatly missed. Um, we have such a strong board, and it, and it, um, I know we'll continue, continue that after tonight, but we really do appreciate everything you both had to say and contribute in the work that you've put into this board the last three years. Um, the basketball team, I, you know, I always, I, I always think about where these kids came from and how everyone out here had a part in where they are. Um, you know, each of you, I'm sure, have touched one of these kids' lives at some point or another in their school career, and, um, they are such, um, I wish they were still here so I could say it to their faces, but such humble, kind young men. And, you know, I know I've had a personal relationship with, with Rafe because of my son, and, you know, him embracing these, these big kids, embracing the little ones, and being such a great shining example of what hard work looks like and where it can take you just in school. So what you've done for these boys, they'll take with them the rest of their lives. So thank you for that, and thank you for being such a, a big part of them. Um, congratulations to the Employees of the Month and Ms. Harris. I think it's amazing, I, I, um, love the fact that we have reached out to the, uh, future and, and we're, we're being a part of progression, so, um, I appreciate that. And, and as always, thank you for everything that each of you do to make this district such an amazing district to work for and be a part of.
Great, well, as, as normal, um, I am not nearly as eloquent as my, uh, board colleagues, but I would just echo everything that's been said. Um, I would start by congratulating, uh, Mr. Louder and Ms. Minor on their election. Uh, congratulations and thank you for your leadership. Thank you to all of our district employees, uh, teachers, administrators. Um, it's really about showing up every day, which is exactly what you do, thick or thin, pandemic or non-pandemic, uh, snow or spring. And, um, and so, you know, as a, as a board member, my, my influence and my impact is very minimal, but yours, uh, can change lives for decades, um, and for generations. So that's what really matters, that's why we're here. Um, the health of the district is really a bellwether for the health of our community, and so to each of you, thank you for what you do, keep it up. Um, I look forward to continuing to support the district and everything I can do as a, as a member of the community, and I just want to say thank you for your commitment and going through some really rough times over the last, uh, 18 months or so, and sticking with it. So thank you for everything that you do. Mr. Pasco?
Thank you. I would also like to thank Scott and Nate for their service on the board. You guys have done great, we appreciate it. And, uh, I will add my hosannas to what others have said for the, the Employees of the Month, for Amy Harris, for our basketball team. There are so many to be enlisted, one, one fear is leaving someone out. But we're, very good things are happening, and we're going to make sure they keep happening. So, thank you all. The consent agenda is before you. Uh, do we have a motion to approve it as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions, provocations?
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes, approved 7-0-0. And we have a bill. So I move that we pay check number ACH 006715 to Mom and Teen and Kuling for $3,045.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Here we go.
Okay, Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Upstaying.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes, approved 6-0-1. And now to certify the election results. All right, is there a motion to accept the certification of votes cast for the Mexico 59 School Board candidate election?
I'll make a motion to accept the certification of votes cast for the Mexico 59 School Board candidate election.
Very good, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
We have seconds?
Seconds, yes.
Uh, questions, comments?
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols? Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes, approved 7-0-0. And I will make a motion to adjourn the 2021 Board of Education signed I. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Questions?
Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes, we are adjourned to 7-0-0.
So as a temporary, very temporary chairperson, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask that Mr. Pasco present plaques to our outgoing, um, board members, and I'm thanking both for your service, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Burt.
Yeah. I don't know if you don't want it. Do you want the spotlight on yourself? Because we do it on the side. No, I'll just reach you out and grab it. So again, thank you, gentlemen, very much. Uh, you came onto the board at an interesting time. You had a lot of big decisions to make, and a lot of moving's happening. And so we appreciate your, your commitment and service to the district, and always doing what you believe is right for the, the students and the community of Mexico. And so to express our, our deep appreciation and thanks, we have some plaques for you. Mr. Burt?
Thank you so much.
This is for you, and the lifetime pass.
Thank you. That's very generous.
And Mr. Nichols? You saying? Your bus keys will be along?
And do you need to start the next weekend?
You know, that's right. I'm sure we're pretty good with bus drivers like Jaeger during the personnel section, so. We, we know that if we needed you, you would answer the call.
Absolutely.
We thank, we thank you both very much. Would you guys like to say anything as a group?
Uh, please be first.
Uh, I just want to say thanks for the support over the last three years. Well, thank you very much, dear. Um, glad you. No, it's greatly appreciated, I've learned a lot. Um, like Mr. Pasco said, I, I did everything I believe was in the best interest of the district, and I don't regret anything that we've done, so. Um, I ran again this time because I feel like I still have something off of the district, and I still feel that way, so maybe in the future, willingly, the public will let me back to this district for this board, so that would be my goal in the long run.
Thank you. I would echo Mr. Nichols' say thank you to all of my, uh, board colleagues for being so inviting and helpful and acclimating me to what a board does. Um, to Dr. Lupartis and, and Mrs. Chastain and others for all the work that you do, um, to guide our district and to all of our teachers and staff. I won't repeat myself from earlier, um, but from, for all of you, thank you for what you do. Um, thank you for our public safety officers and, um, we're forward to working with you in the days and weeks ahead. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So could I have Ms. Minor and Mr. Louder come up? So we'll do this in unison, and you'll just repeat after me. No pressure, no pressure whatsoever. Raise your hands. They do, yeah. We're going to get to do, raise your hand. So you'll raise your right hand, and you'll repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Marcy Minor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
And for the Mexico School District Number 59.
And for Mexico School District 59.
County of Hadrin.
County of Hadrin.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To my, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law.
According to law.
There you go, and you will take the seats. If you will take these with you, I would like to welcome them.
Thank you.
Something is wrong with my ear.
I already got mine ready to go after I watched it last year.
I will now open the floor for nominations for officers. First, do we have nominations for president?
I'd like to nominate this to Pasco. I'd like to nominate Todd Jaeger.
Are there other nominations? Okay, we will vote on the, um, in the order that the nominations were received. First, we will vote on Mr. Pasco.
Okay. Ms. Minor?
No.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
Upstaying.
Ms. John?
No.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes.
3, 3, 1.
Okay, now we will vote on, um, Mr. Jaeger.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
No.
Mrs. Dement?
No.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
No.
4, 3, 0. Mr. Jaeger is now the president.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Please, you can vote on whoever you're giving it.
Now do we have nominations for vice president?
I nominate Heather Dement.
Do we have other nominations? Now we will vote on Ms. Dement.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Upstaying.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes.
6, 0, 1. Mrs. Dement is vice president.
All right, this time we'll take nominations for treasurer.
I'll nominate Ms. Teal.
And the others.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Upstaying.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes.
6, 0, 1.
This time we'll appoint a secretary. It's Bethany Collins. We have, we have a nominee.
We have to nominate.
We have a nominee.
I nominate Bethany Collins, and no one else.
Anyone else?
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco? I know. 7, 0, 0.
All right, this time, um, we'll need to appoint a MSBA, Missouri School Board Association delegate. Nominations?
I'll nominate Ms. Kelly Teal.
Anyone else? All right, roll call.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Te, Ms. Teal?
Upstaying.
Okay. Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes.
6, 0, 1.
All right, on the Missouri School Board Association, we alternate. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate. I'll nominate Nicole Johnson.
Anyone else? All right, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Abstaining.
Mr. Pasco?
Yes.
Six, zero, one.
Now we have reports and presentations. This time it's CPA, Mexico CPA President Sarah Keatley is gonna give a presentation.
I'm gonna give this to you guys in paper, just so you could chicken scratch and so that you have to writing what I'm talking about this evening. I also am being in the hopes that you guys will, you know, ask some questions and like have some discussion. That's the real point behind us presenting to you all every year. So, um, I'd really like for you guys to discuss and ask and talk about what we're going to talk about as a whole group. So, um, because it's been a while since I've seen some of you, um, I just need to tell you that our, um, groups have changed this year and the salary team that was active this year, um, we had a really good showing, um, from both, um, elementary and secondary levels this year. So this was the team that worked on salary, this presentation and our salary recommendations for you. It looked a little different this year. Obviously, the beginning, um, we were not together, um, to talk, which is kind of weird, talking about some stuff like this in, in Google meets. So, um, we did, we were able to do the same things, though. So we, um, got together, we talked about goals that were brought to the team from each level and building, and then we were able to survey, um, the district staff members in order to get data about what they really wanted to see happen, um, going forward. We were able to do that through a survey, which is our standard method, um, and in the next slide, you can see where we basically started from after that survey. So this is directly from our survey that was sent out to the staff members, and this is basically where we started. Um, we took their, you know, requests and we moved forward with that. Basically, we culled that down into four goals for this year. Um, a transition from our current leave designations to PTO, um, a review update and creation of true non-certified and support staff pay schedules, um, creation of longevity incentives for all staff members, not just the certified staff, um, and then the standard operation of the certified staff pay scale for the next school year. That was basically what we got out of, um, both what the salary team talked about as well as the data from our district-wide questionnaire. The reason we focused on these four is seriously because moving forward, um, if we have gained nothing else from COVID and the pandemic, we know, um, that it's not just about money in our district that makes people stay and come to work and, um, be loyal and, you know, want to grow as educators. It's about culture, um, and that is something that we really want to strive for and to, um, make improvements in in our district. I think while we are going forward, we have a long way to go, um, and so some of the things I'm gonna talk to you about tonight may not cost the district anything, but they make big impacts on the people who work in your district. So just keep that in mind. It's not always about more money. It's about maybe how we designate it and what other things we do with it that create an environment where staff feels supported, which ultimately leads to student success. Because we know that teachers and staff members are the real reason, reason why students are successful, um, in our buildings and in our district. So this is kind of just a reminder that we're talking about a balance of things. We're not looking for, you know, to like put all of our eggs in one basket. It needs to be spread out across things like culture and values, um, opportunity, work-life balance. Um, I don't think that's news to any of you. You guys deal with that in your own professions and in your own lives. So we just ask you to keep it in mind that it's also what we strive for, um, with our district. So. Uh, the first goal that we want to talk about with you guys is a transition to PTO. Um, it has been talked, what I would consider like under the, like on the sideboards of our, on the, you know, a little bit before, but we really want to focus on it for, um, this year. And the whys for that are very simple. This is one of those things that doesn't necessarily involve a big change in money. It involves a big change in culture. It involves a big change in professionalism and how your staff feels about what they do every day and if they're valued as professionals. So PTO transfer or transitioning to PTO is gonna simplify and clarify the leave process. I'm telling you right now, the simpler, the better. If, again, something we have learned in the past two years with the pandemic, the easier it is for people to make good decisions about employment, the better it is for everyone. You're gonna show your employees that they're valued as professionals. Um, if you trust me to use my time both on and off the clock appropriately, I guarantee you, you're gonna have more people that do that for you. It's gonna build staff morale and it's gonna build a culture of trust at every building and every level. Um, we're not just talking about certified staff, we're talking about all staff. And it allows district staff to make better decisions about leave requests. Um, something that we really saw, especially this last two years, is that, um, we need to be able to make sure that every member of the staff feels that they can make a request for leave and have to go through the exact same process that any other staff member would do regardless of their level situation, certified, non-certified. So we had a lot of, you know, questions and concerns about that coming out of the pandemic. And again, I think transitioning to PTO would really help streamline that process and make it more accessible to every level of staff member. So. What that looks like is very simple. It's assembling, a labeling and designation changing over to PTO. We're not asking for more time. We're not asking for you to, um, change the way that time is utilized by staff members. We're simply asking for it to be a change in designation. This can be rolled out with little to no cost to the district, uh, because you're already giving those levels of time, you're just changing a label when, how you request it. So little to no cost, big impact, um, which is one reason why we think it's probably the first thing that you guys should consider. And I promise you, it'll make a difference, um, both personally and professionally. I can promise you that. So, next goal that we talked about was, um, a non-certified and support staff salary schedules. We found when we started doing our research about this topic that we are fairly far behind as districts go, um, which is not good. We always want to be, um, at least on par, if not ahead of our matching districts. So, um, there are groups in our districts, in our district that is in desperate need of updating. Some of these people do not have salary schedules at all. They're working on a very antiquated tier system if, um, they, from, that have been in place since before I started teaching here, which is over a decade, um, and some of them have not been updated in much longer than that. So we're talking about groups like nurses and peros, technology, food service, secretaries, and maintenance. They make our jobs possible. We could not run our district without these people. So we looked at districts and most of them have a much more defined and clear-cut salary schedule in place for all of these groups, if not every single one of them, um, which leads me to believe that we need to get on the ball with that. Um, the, I've had this question, so some of the districts that we pulled information from to compare ourselves to, um, we pulled salary schedule information from Centrelia, Columbia, Jeff City, Fulton, Moberly. We had a couple of others on our list, but they were not able to get our information back to us in time for this presentation. Um, we're hoping to have a few more districts provide that information to us, um, at moving forward with the transition and the creation. Creating salary schedules for these groups, um, streamlined starting and pay increases. It also creates a much more defined area for how you treat non-certified groups, which can sometimes get lost, especially when you only see me. I represent a very large group of employees, but they're not the only employees in our district. And the certified staff is very clear, made it very clear to us this year that they are concerned about the non-certified staff in the district. Um, it was our number one priority, um, for this year. So. What that looks like. This is gonna be not so simple and not a no-cost item, okay? This is gonna be a multi-year goal, uh, due to both the financial and the workload aspects. It's not easy to take, um, a system that we have currently and completely take it down to scaffold and rebuild it from the ground up for those type of groups. We're talking about a lot of work, um, and we're probably talking about some money, um, involved in that because when you talk about pay schedules, you inevitably talk about money. We're gonna be continuing to work on the groups that we feel are the most urgent for updating, um, next year, and then we're going to figure out who we need to roll out over the next, um, two or three group levels. I believe what we talked about in our last meeting is that our goal is to have the support staff, um, updated and salary schedules created over the next five years. There are some groups that are super urgent and some that we believe can be rolled out a little later, but they all need to be done. So that's really a five-year plan, and we're hoping for your help. P.S. Okay? So get ready to talk about it a lot because we're gonna be asking you to. All right. Next, longevity incentives. Um, longevity incentives are something that becoming, that is becoming more popular along the lines of education, um, and the reasons why districts are doing it is that keeping staff members is good for districts. Quality educators over a long period of time bring benefits to districts that you cannot figure into just, um, their salary. You cannot know how much it means to a district to have a teacher start and retire in that district. Um, that person brings a huge amount of training, expertise, and value to a building beyond just what they do, um, for their teaching salary. We want to know, we want those people to know that they're valued, they're seen as important, um, through both recognition and financial benefits. We're not just talking about money, um, incentives here. We're talking about some basic recognition, um, on a very, um, district-wide, but also building-wide scale. And we've had lots of, um, input from different areas at this, and we expect, continue to get lots of input on this, um, because we're moving into a, a timeframe where, um, the people that we're hiring aren't just concerned about money anymore. If you've read anything about the fact that millennials are teaching kindergarten now, think about that for just a second. I'm not one of them, um, so you're not thinking about me. Okay? But they have a much different perspective on what they want in a job than say someone who, um, you always hear the, the, they're, than the boomer generation, or when you're talking about me, someone who's in the middle. Um, I see both af, both aspects of that, but they don't just want a salary, okay? They're looking for other things to feel valued and important in their jobs. And it's important that we keep up with that. That's a time thing, and we need to roll with it, um, because otherwise, we're not going to get good employees in the district. And that leads into the last reason why you want to do this, and it's because we want to slow down and ultimately stop, um, the unwritten understanding in mid-Missouri that Mexico Public Schools is a starting ground or a shortstop for employees. I'm willing to say it out loud, um, if you talk to other educators in our region, they will say, oh, yeah, Mexico, go teach there for a year or two, then you can get a job in somewhere where you really want. It's not a secret. Um, so if you don't want to talk about it, you're kind of sticking your head in the sand, and we really need to talk about it. Because that unwritten understanding is why we have high turnover. It's why teachers don't stay, and it's, that goes back to that whole encompassing culture of our district. Um, it's not just about the money. I really want to stress that to you guys. Um, some of the things that we're looking for is not just financial, um, and I think this really speaks to that. All right. Last is, oh, I'm sorry, what that looks like. Um, we can implement incentives within the next two or three years. I'm really hoping for two. Recognition can be done building level, district level, all district meetings. There's lots of different ways that you can start recognizing your employees. I think we're already on a really good trend with that. I want it to continue. Um, and I think your, both your certified and your non-certified staff want that. Um, employees of the month, um, all district meetings. We're having, we're having discussions already about what we want to do to recognize people who have been here for five years, 10 years, 15 years, um, 20 years, which is coming up for me really quick. Financial items need to be rolled out after checking through policy and of course, the financial cost of those items. Um, but recognition is something that we do, um, and I think we just need to continue growing that as a, as a group. All right, lastly, certified salary schedule operation. This is nothing new to those of you who have been on the board. Currently, I believe, I cannot give you a number on this operation simply because contracts have not gone out and come back in yet. So I have not been made aware that, um, of any reasons why we should not be able to operate, um, the salary schedule for the next year. Usually, if there are reasons why that would be under discussion, they come up very quickly. Um, we have not talked about those, but I know that Central Office will be able to get you the cost of that particular operation as soon as contracts, um, go out and come back in. So. That, I don't even think you need an, there's not a slide that says what that looks like because we do it, we talk about it every year, the operation of the salary schedule for certified staff. So I didn't include a what that looks like for you. That was really quick, but I didn't want to like read my PowerPoint slides word for word like, I know, okay? So, questions, comments, I know that's a lot to take in, in, you know, my, my very quick presentation, but please, please, if you have questions, let me know, ask now so that I can find you the answers if I don't have an answer already.
When? When, when do the contracts usually come out?
The last two years, they've come out later. Um, I'm not sure when contracts, I'll be really honest. That would be a question for...
Let me ask you something. Is it, maybe, is it May 15th or is that the?
May 15th would be extremely late.
Okay. When, so as you all as a teacher and stuff like that, when, when is it comfortable for you all? Cause I, I mean, my mom was a teacher, but I was her kids, she didn't talk about something like that. So when you all are teachers, when is the time you feel comfortable getting it so you can prepare for the next year? Cause I know there's a, everyone gets nervous if you don't have something in hand.
Well, I will tell you that, um, usually about February is when people start looking for, if they're not planning to stay in their district, about when they start looking for new jobs. And that's based on the fact that a lot of districts want to fill those positions so that they have a solid know on when or, or who is coming back and who's not. So I will definitely say that month of February and probably the first two weeks of March are your standard time period for, um, posting jobs. If you're going to be looking for a job in a different district, that's the time you should be doing that. I would say you get much later than where we are now, and people like, people are already hyped, like you, you are gonna be getting the, I'm, I'm gonna say this, and I need you all to just bear with me. You're gonna be getting the dregs of the barrel the later you go. Because we're talking about people that hem and hawed around with their contracts, or maybe, you know, were people who were not invited back to their current district for whatever reason. So the later you go, the less quality you get when you talk about employees in education. Um, I'm really firm on the fact that it should be in that February, early March stage. So if you're asking about contracts, um, they've come out later and later. Um, it's, it's something we're not really exactly sure on because we haven't seen them yet, um, but we're all waiting.
So you're saying teacher contracts have not gone out?
Yep. We have not gotten them.
Okay.
No.
I heard from several teachers.
Well, and, and, and the other thing is, is that it's just, especially in a year where there's all other stress involved, that's just another layer of, you know, you're like expecting and you just don't get. So, um, unless you're trying to tell me something with not sending me a contract.
I was gonna say, I thought it was about yours. I thought Gary Bell said that one except for you.
That really would not surprise me at this point. I mean, my boss abandoned me last week, so, but no. Um, according to my files, I went back and looked at the dates on mine, um, we were talking anywhere from the first week of April all the way back into March. Like depending on the year and who's, you know, running the show, it's been, but I would say that they're running late this year.
Yeah. You probably get a vibe from all the other teachers that not a good vibe.
No, no, no one, no one likes it when contracts are late. Um, it's very, um, again, it just puts that pressure on, well, and here's the other thing, guys, it allows people to leave. If you haven't seen your contract, you don't, you have the ability to go interview for jobs and, you know, do other things. jobs and, you know, do other things, you know? And maybe that is a, a balance in, hey, you know, I haven't signed my contract, I haven't even seen it yet, so maybe this other deal they're offering me looks really good, you know? It's just one of those things where you have to take it in consideration about what that long-term does for your next year.
And that plays into your all's culture.
Exactly. That nervous is, you don't want teachers to be nervous about contracts. That's, that, yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm in a place where we got great cultures. Steve, or Steve, he did a test today.
I do like that PTO because you're talking about rolling vacation and sick time together.
Yes, absolutely.
You'd get honest employees. I need to take day of PTO without a day of vacation or I'm not feeling good.
Right.
Or really I'm going fishing.
And, and I'll be very honest, you guys know from meeting with me, I will tell you the honest answer. I'm not into like tippy-toeing around it and sugarcoating it. The people who are going to abuse that system are already abusing it. You're not going to end up with more people abusing that system if you transition to a PTO. That is not the trend in industry or in districts. What you are going to get is honest employees that say, "Hey, I need this time and I appreciate you giving it to me as a professional."
But I'll be honest, this is the first time I've ever heard the employees ask for PTO.
Yes. We were...
Especially it's, you know, usually the administrative, the management, they want PTO and employees do not. So that, that's where I'm kind of having a hard time wrapping around that you're actually asking for PTO.
The reasons why we really, when we first came together and started talking about it, the reasons why it came from the employee level is simply because it, it almost simplifies the system for everyone, not to mention our level, but also Central Office's level. But it also guarantees equity. At whatever level you are, you feel confident in saying, "Hey, I can go in and request PTO. I don't have 18 designations where I have to figure out like, is it sick self, is it sick family?" Like some of that gets real gray, you know? Some of that gets real iffy depending on who you are and what you need and what you do. PTO is very simple. PTO is one click. And like I said, you get people, the people who abuse that system are already doing it with the system you have. The trend shows us that you will not get more employees abusing a PTO system. In fact, it can help your leave go down depending on what you do with it and how you make that transition.
I don't argue that. I just, it just gives four people employees are asking for it. That's what makes me, that's why I was kind of sitting here going, wasn't why?
I wondered because usually PTO goes hand-in-hand with earned, you know, like you get four hours of rise or, you know.
To clarify. But you're basically talking about the 10 sick days that are, as referred to, sick days. And within that, the employee, when they use that sick day, has to choose from a myriad of things as to why they're using the sick day. Now it's just, I need to take this time off, PTO, done. Administrators don't have to try to make a decision on whether that's a vow, whether that person's legitimately using, like they're saying they're using. And I know from an employee standpoint, if you're somebody who uses that appropriately, you have a much better feeling about the whole thing because you know there are people who don't use it appropriately. I would support that.
Ms. Min, if you would like to send, like, from your experience, you're saying that employees don't usually ask that. In your experience, why has that been? Are there specific examples that you want me to find out, investigate?
PTO doesn't usually carry over. PTO is what it is for the year, whatever. So in, in most business models, you're speaking like accrue sick leave or whatever. So if, like with where I work, if we went to a PTO, you're looking at people like me who have 90 accrued sick days, all of a sudden that's gone. Like in reality, I mean, it's, we've talked about PTO, we've talked about ways to make that more equitable for the people that have had it saved up, but that's kind of where you get, you can't save that PTO, so.
We have actually talked about that in our meetings and we've talked about transitioning to a system where there would still be some rollover and there would also, because of policy and law a little bit, there needs to also be a little bit of designation for bereavement. We've talked about because we're not exactly sure how exactly all that works because right now the district has policy that states something and we got to make sure that we can keep that, you know, above board with all of that. But the PTO transition that we're talking about would work almost exactly the same as the system we have now. I don't think that, I, I will tell you that I know how, after several years in the district, how many hours I have saved up, but I also know that there's a reason for that and I believe that that is probably more true for your employees than it's not. So I use that rollover as a cushion if something were to happen, a major event in my life. I can't afford the accident, the short-term disability to start when they offer it to us as one of our benefits. I cannot financially afford for that to start on day one of my major event or whatever that might look like. I have spent a significant amount of time working for the district and I now know that I have that cushion built up so that if I am in a major accident, if I have a major health impairment, if something happens to me that is going to require me to be out of the district for any length of time, I am covered. I have that time.
And in CTA's idea of the PTO program, where does that time go?
So in our version, we would get to roll that over. Now, we would have to talk, like, we would get to bank it still. That time doesn't disappear at the end of the year. I think that's again, one of those things that...
Okay, so that's not a true PTO program.
Okay.
So that, and that's where I'm kind of getting confused and trying to outline what you're saying because that's not true PTO.
And maybe what we would need to talk about is like what we want to call that, if you, if it's not true PTO, what we want to call that simplifying of the designations.
So currently with your benefits package, you get, we call them buckets at work. So you get a bucket of sick leave and a bucket of vacation or whatever. So you're, you are going to combine that and just call it...
The bucket.
Okay.
And that is PTO and that's where I was getting confused. And we've tried to talk about a way of combining that too where you have PTO, but you somehow those people that have put in all that time and saved all that time that they somehow get to keep some of that or whatever. And we've talked about having one big giant bucket that the people that had that time could draw from if needed, but...
The best part about this is there is no, as far as I know, that we've talked about, there, this is a district-by-district setup. There is no overarching umbrella that says you have to run a strict policy this way if you decide to go what I'm calling PTO versus whether you decide to run a program that does sick, vacation, personal, you know, that designates it out. So the good news is, is that we get to decide that on our own and that's where I'm asking for your help with that. Salary team as well as CTA members and building levels, you know, we know what we would like to see. We're asking for your help in making that policy change and that's basically where we're headed.
At a place I worked before, we just called it paid timeout instead of personal timeout.
Right.
Which combines your vacation and your sick and then you can roll it over because in your situation that would work. Or if we know someone needs something off, but they're out of sick time, it's not going to create a sub issue when they call in sick for an event that they know needed to happen a month in advance, but they have used family or personal sick and they don't have that time.
Right.
And then we're scrambling for a sub. Or we have a teacher that's here that has to run here to sub and this teacher has to run here, so.
Well, and I mean, I'll, to bring the sub issue in, like, it doesn't matter what system you are, there are no subs. So it doesn't matter what you want to call this. Like the subbing issue is going to be handled the same way it is now, which is the best we can do on any given day with what we've got. So this is really more about someone being able and feeling able to say, "This is time that I need" and there aren't different hoops at different levels. There aren't, there isn't anyone saying, "Oh, I'm sorry," you know, like, "I don't think that one's going to get approved" versus, you know, anyone else in the district being approved. It's, it's really more about equity at all levels. That's really where that kind of, that conversation stemmed from when it was brought to the salary team and when it was told to us by our building-level people, so.
I mean, for me, at the end of the day, it goes back to the culture. If you feel like you're getting questioned on everything and micromanaged, then you get sick of answering to people. So if it's, I always have had this at our work, if it's important that you've asked off, it's important.
Right.
So that'll eliminate a lot of stress.
Yeah. Not to mention, and I, we go back, the lady with the, I handle the money, like, you should put that on your name tag now. Like, I'm selling, I'm telling you. It streamlines everybody's system. It's easier to worry about at every level. It's not something, you know, payroll, benefits, it's just easier. It's a, it's a more streamlined system and like I said, if we've learned anything in the past two years, simple is better for everyone, so.
Like Ms. Keatley said, we're still meeting. Our CTA team is still looking at, at this, these issues that the top kind of three or four in bringing recommendations to us. And so that is something that we've looked at is PTO having different structures, like you talked about, Mr. Min and, and like you've talked about Ms. Keatley. And one of the MSBA kind of brochures that talks about PTO as an issue actually talks about re, in exchange for, for more flexibility and more trust and more professional respect, really proposes less or fewer leave days with added flexibility. And so that is something that I just sent, you know, at the end of our meeting away with our team members to read. So we're still talking about that and I did find last year that we sent out contracts following the April 21st board meeting.
We have lots of nervous teachers last year.
That was, that was not... I would, I would say last year was probably an outlier. Like I wouldn't, I wouldn't take last year as, as the time. There were lots of stuff going on last year at the end of the year. I would say that that was probably even later than, much later than normal.
And I, I, and I just look back, I looked back at prior years to see that, but...
I, when I looked back at my own contracts, I was really seeing like that late March, early April dates for when we got the letter. Now, that might be two weeks after your secretary has already sent out the note, the email that says, "Hey, these are coming to you, be looking for them," you know? But my, my actual like contract letter had dates on it. That was that late March, first week of April, so.
That's a good thing to put us on notice that if we want to retain the teachers, we need to be on it.
I think you do. Teachers can't leave if they already have contracts, especially teachers you want to keep. So, and not just teachers, it's not really just the teachers, it's administrators, it's any contracted staff, which we have a lot of them. It's not just a certified staff issue, it's every level, so.
And I'm not asking for an answer to this right now, but, because it would probably take too much of your time anyway, but on the longevity incentives and stuff, I would like to see like some ideas of what you guys, more extensive ideas of what you think. Because when you say incentives to me and then in the same sentence you said, "We're not talking about necessarily financially," it is, I mean, depending on how you do it. If you've got like great ideas and what's other districts are doing to, to help with that, then that would be awesome to get a list of.
We have a spreadly, a spreadsheet started and I will be more than happy to share some of those ideas with you by email, by whatever, so.
Just like if you have ideas, you know, what other districts might be doing or just...
Excellent. We've been looking all over the state for that, so we actually have some ideas that we've pulled from, you know, smaller, larger, all kinds of places. So yes, we'll absolutely share those with you, ma'am. Thank you so much for your time. I'm sorry I probably went a little longer than normal. I apologize, but I hadn't seen you guys in two years, so yay.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Keatley.
Thank you.
Onto the next item, building reports. Got the reports from all the different areas almost. So does anyone have any questions or thoughts or comments? Just a couple for me is like on the, glad to see the graduations back at eight o'clock, so I just sweat so bad out there. You know, when you look through their career center, those people kind of caught me that's in the cosmetology department. Could you imagine working with the public having been coming in all the time? They're kind of nervous when they get out into the workforce, I would think, so, I see that. But then, you know, heard a lot about culture tonight and then in Hawthorne, how they're, one of the focus areas is school culture, improving the staff openness. Can't say it more than anything, if you're able to express your feelings, it's the only way to get through issues, so it's nice to see that. And of course, I know Nicole said earlier about the attendance at McMillan. Anyone else have any thoughts, comments?
I thought it was really cool to see that the JAG program was expanding to the high school. So it's a great program.
Any other comments? We'll head to the next item. So tomorrow night at the Mexico Senior High School, we're having a Region 17 MSBA spring meeting. So let's start it. I think I read the dinner at seven. That's all I...
At 5:45, we're open for people to come and register.
Okay. And I think Mr. Pascoe said at the last meeting, "Was there an attendance award?"
Normally.
Yes.
It'll be in the Filbert Gym.
Okay. You're at Filbert Gym and if we're attending, we're still supposed to get ahold of you, send you? Any questions? All right, on to new business. The first orders of approval of the MSBA Full Policy Maintenance Service Agreement. Is there anyone that might be give a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the MSBA Full Policy Maintenance Agreement as presented. Do you need me to read those demands?
No, no, that's just information about the cost of it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All right. Roll call.
Ms. Minor? Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Seven zero zero. On the item B, 13B, approval of the MSBA membership dues. I think there's no change from last year, which was 85, 97.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the 2021, 2022 MSBA membership dues.
Was there a second?
Questions, concerns? All right, roll call.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
I did that order.
Seven zero zero, the purpose. All right. Next item, the approval of bid for track resurfacing. Everyone seen the bids? Lowest bid was $93,242. That's from Fisher Tracks. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the bid of $93,242 from Fisher Tracks for the resurfacing of the high school track.
I'll second that. Keith second's here.
Steve?
Steve?
Out of curiosity, is that the same company that did the chart to begin with?
Yes, we were really concerned about that.
How often does it get resurfaced?
I'm not certain, but I know that last year we were planning on doing that and Dr. Tippelton had postponed that due to what we were hearing from the state as far as COVID revenues decreasing. We just can't wait any longer.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Ms. Minor? Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes. Seven zero zero, the approved, the passes, or it's approved? You can correct me on my terminology if you need to. Next item, declare items no longer needed for educational use. Office chairs, I assume some of these chairs were those office chairs?
All of them.
None.
Someone might be give a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, items declared no longer needed.
I'll second that, you're one of those suckers.
All right, any comments? All right, roll call.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Seven zero zero. All right, next item is the approval of personnel.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel as listed.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All right, roll call.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Seven zero zero, the approval of the personnel. Next is the approval of the administrator's contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
All right, any questions or concerns? Slower's contract. All right, roll call.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
All right, item G, thirteen G, approval of summer school personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of summer school personnel as presented.
Second.
Any questions? So just because of my ignorance, how is summer school personnel chosen? Is there a hierarchy? I mean, do you start with years of service? Do people just put their name in an ad, drawn out, L S A?
So building principals, summer school, building admin are the ones who choose, and they take lots of things into consideration, uh, encouraged to take longevity, who is better suited, but it's up to the building principal of summer school.
Okay. So one, one little thought I had, just listening to Ms. Keatley talk a while ago, just part of keeping people, do they, do they, when they come to school, do they rely? When they fit a job here, do they rely on that summer school contract as part of keeping them happy? Or do most people just don't really care about teaching summer school?
I really think that is an individual thing. Some teachers really enjoy it, some staff members do and do not. Um, I will say that there, it is an application, so you do put your name in for consideration for summer school every year, and then, um, the summer school admin team and Mrs. Chastain, um, you know, they go from there. Uh, so it is something that you have to put your name forward for, um, if you're interested.
We're usually able, right now, to fill most of the positions that people have signed up for. It does depend on enrollment, so we're adding more people, and some people will back out and say, oh, I can't do it after all, we're going on a trip, or. So we'll continue to have changes with the actual personnel, um, but it does depend on enrollment too and numbers. But as of about three o'clock, we had eight hundred and ten students have signed up, which is a little ahead of track compared to normal summers. Um, but we definitely, when I was a teacher, I did count on that money, so.
Any other questions, comments?
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes. Seven zero zero, the approval of summer school personnel. Item thirteen H, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, teaching contracts. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the basic terms in the twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two certified teacher staff contracts as presented.
Second. I'll second it. Any questions or discussions? Just going back to what we talked about a while ago on contracts, uh, just making sure we're doing everything we can to retain teachers. I mean, everything we can, because that's what it's about. So just, just more of an emphasis on that.
It looks like in two thousand nineteen, we, um, approved those April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. So I do have for the last couple of years.
So maybe we're just going to make a goal to get it done out of the nation.
Right, there's, goals are made to be achieved, so, anything we can do to help, we're gonna do it. All right, any other comments? Good, roll call.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Seven zero zero for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two teaching contracts. All right, next item, thirteen I, the twenty-twenty-one A MSBA policy updates. This is the first reading of it. So if you just, any comments?
I think the board president, I think the board president reads the policies to us.
Anyone have any questions? All right, just next item, thirteen J, the health benefits renewal.
I make a motion to approve a rate of five hundred and twenty-nine dollars per month for an employee that qualifies for health benefits for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? They're all pretty damn, they're pretty good.
Why does it no longer have orthodontics?
I know.
That question?
Right, right, yes. Um, and Ms. Kerr? Right, yes, we do, we do have two options, um, and so, um, what, and this is just a plan change that our consortium that we're involved in, um, elected to make. Do you know the rationale behind that, Ms. Karhoff? What they.
I guess we, and all the district's many employees wanted an option where they weren't paying for the orthodontic, so.
So basically, it doesn't have the orthodontics, but you can go up to.
But you can go up to a bigger plan.
Right.
It's not like we're not offering.
Just having one that really kind of inflates that price, so. I will say that we're very fortunate. I think we're the only ones in the conference that don't have a, a gigantic increase in our health insurance premium. So we're very, very blessed in that, and, and that will help us, um, when we look at funding that salary schedule and making those improvements that Ms. Keatley talked about.
Who was, was it Anthem the carrier right now, or? Any other questions?
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Health benefits renewal is approved, seven zero zero. Next item is to set the budget work session. There's three dates listed there, twenty-ninth, twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh. Does anyone have any preferences or any conflicts on any of those?
I would prefer on the twenty-eighth.
On the twenty-seventh.
So the twenty-seventh.
I think Keith's working that night. Does twenty-seventh work for everyone? Six o'clock, is that gonna be here?
Yes, and we'll have supper.
So, April twenty-seventh. All right, our next item, does anyone wanna make a motion to go to the executive sessions?
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session, a closed session may be held to discuss the subject personnel with closed vote and closed record pursuant to RSMO six one zero dot zero two one, section thirty.
Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Minor?
Yes.
Ms. Teal?
Yes.
Mrs. Dement?
Yes.
Mr. Louder?
Yes.
Ms. John?
Yes.
Mr. Pascoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Seven zero zero, we'll head to the access, the executive session here. Thanks for everyone being here.